Let's give it another try, huh? All right. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that, we are here for a special study session regarding the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, report. First, we'll have a staff report from Brian Davis, the interim city administrator, which I'll talk a little bit about at the council meeting, and then we'll have an opportunity for council discussion. Brian, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Council President, Coach Martin, Deputy Mayor Honda, and members of the council. We're here to talk about ARPA and the funding that we have available to help us out with some of our expenses related to this particular funding source. So this is, we're going to go through real quickly what ARPA is. The Treasury final rule, which we are waiting on, we were trying to give council updates on different possibilities for spending. We do have the Rule from Treasury now, which does help provide us additional guidance as to what is eligible and what is not, what's been either approved obligated or scheduled to be spent, and then updated projection on the proposal. So ARPA, the precursor to ARPA was the CARES Act, which helped out with economic impacts due to COVID. Cities were largely left out of the CARES Act, and so ARPA not only was a second round of helping economic impacts from COVID, but it included cities this time to help with their financial stability and restore their fiscal health. So we did, this is general for most federal grants, but especially for ARPA. It's intended to match one-time revenue with one-time expenses. It helps, we should prioritize citywide services over four years, so that's an important timeframe to remember in what we're discussing. A couple of things to avoid is create recurring obligations such that we're not left with a situation to deal with after the funding goes away, and then to avoid audit refund risk, which with federal funds and a four-year timeframe, if we spent money tomorrow, the federal government can come back four years later and say, you know, you didn't spend this right, and then we'd be obligated to pay it back four years after the fact if we don't do it right. So the process thus far, we've calculated our lost revenue, and this is based on a number of different assumptions and formulas that's provided to us, and captured a list of potential uses. As I mentioned before, we did get the additional guidance from Treasury on what is eligible. And so now, with that in mind, what we'll primarily be talking about tonight is prioritizing expenses and messaging that to the community and then executing those expenses. So real quickly, what the final rule from Treasury was, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but basically just for the councils, but you were given this ahead of time, and I'm happy to go into one of these individually, but they, you know, the council, you had expressed a desire to get a clear proposal from, for you to consider, and we were intentionally proceeding cautiously because we needed to have this additional guidance from Treasury before we presented something to you, so that we would avoid giving you a proposal that we would find out, you know, a month later was no longer eligible. So these are some of the things that we did find out. The next slide as well. Most importantly, we can't replenish our reserves, which is what a lot of cities wanted to do, because during COVID, we were drawing from reserves, or many cities were drawing from reserves to help out with some expenses that were, that didn't have the revenue to do so. So we can't, we can't do that. We can't replace what was lost in any reserve. There is a new formula, which has a new inflation coefficient or inflator. It was 4.2, it's now 5.1, which reflects our new projection for lost revenue. It was 13 and a half million, it's now 14 and a half. And then we did, there was additional guidance on health and economic eligibility, which includes public safety, and Congress has specifically said that they want demonstrated gun violence, or things that would help towards producing gun violence. So this is the, what we have so far. So the overall grant is 19.2 million. What we've calculated, based on, again, a number of assumptions and formulas that have been provided to us, is roughly 14 and a half million. And we'll discuss that amount later on. We're going to get into some additional details. I'm just talking big picture at this point. So what the council has approved already, apart from that, has been the items that you see there in expense categories, administrative and grant-related, essential hazard pay, and broadband infrastructure. Those have been approved by council. So what's left of, you know, what's unspoken for is $3.7 million, which is restricted to public health and economic impacts. And we'll, again, we'll talk about what that specifically means in a minute. So this slide, I'm not expecting you to be able to read this, but this shows the guidance that we received on what is eligible for expenses, and these are where we've assigned, or where we're proposing to assign the dollar amounts that I mentioned on the previous slide. What I want you to pay particular attention to is, I'm going to zoom in on this, this public safety and community assistance, and that's the 3.7 that is, that was remaining on the previous slide. And so a lot of what will be requested of us from the community, and in terms of assistance or grants or direct payments, a lot of that may potentially come from this source. In addition to, I'm going to go back a slide, so not to confuse everyone, I'm going to go back one. In, I'm going to go back two, actually. Okay. In addition to, no, it's not there. I'm going to get to the next slide. I think it is. So bear with me. Okay. This is the one I'm talking about. So that's in addition to what you see at the bottom is a $2 million contingency that we still have flexibility to work with. So this is really what we need to get into tonight and get our hands dirty a little bit on this proposal. And this is what we are proposing to the council, what the mayor has recommended for approval. They sat down with each department, had identified the lost revenue in each of these categories, and then in addition to that, what is eligible for ARPA funding, and these have been, these items have been identified as ones that should, we believe that should move forward. And I believe, okay, yes. So the next steps were consideration of potential projects, the lost revenue, government services, and public safety, and then the recommendation to identify the council-approved list of expenses with these funds, and then on top of that, the category that I mentioned earlier about the community assistance and direct payments and grant funding, that would be something that we would come back to the council for once we have identified what those potential needs are, and that would also be accompanied with an application process, which we don't have determined at this point. So it's merely just to identify that the dollar amount is there and is needed for community assistance. What the process is and how that can be, how people can be eligible, how they can apply for the grants, and how it can be dispersed, is, we've not ironed out the details of that yet, but just wanted to at least identify that that's where the money could go. So I'm going to leave it on this slide for discussion purposes. I'll stop sharing my screen, but I'll, hopefully, will this still appear on their screen? Okay. So this is on your, hopefully you have this in your packet. This is the page that we want to discuss with you. So I'm going to stop sharing and then open it up for questions.
Okay. Councilmember Sephardosson, and then Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I have two questions. One is with the IT on that, on that list. I just wanted clarification. I don't understand what that is. And then I have another question.
Sure. So there's, there's four IT items on the list. One is new software for the court. They call it O-Court is the name of the software, and so that's, that's in process right now, actually, because it is such a pressing need to be moved on now. And then the disaster backup is another priority. The Darktrace, I don't know what that is, but Thomas's, security. Okay. Thank you. These have all been embedded with the department has prior to me coming on, so I'll admit that I do have some ignorance in some of these. And then password management system is the other one, assuming for additional security as well.
So disaster, what's that one exactly? And then, yeah, those two, the disaster one and the dark?
Sure.
Those two.
Great. Thank you.
I have another question.
I, Councilmember?
Once they answer.
You want Brian Davis to answer the Darktrace?
Please. No, he's going to answer my, but I have another question also unrelated to this. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmembers, good question. Both those are security-related items. The disaster backup recovery is a two-part piece. It's consulting dollars to help us establish a plan, kind of take a business objective. So the, all the necessary pieces and components of our business, where the risks lie, and where we need to have a disaster recovery plan developed, meaning what's our intended recovery time objective, and what do we actually recover? So meaning, is it something that we, you know, let's say, for example, our permitting system, does it need to be functional within minutes of an issue? That costs more. So, you know, there's, there's a, so if you want to recover stuff fast, and a lot of it, it's going to cost more. And so if you, if you can wait on some things, it costs a little bit less, depending on the infrastructure and the hardware and the systems that you put in place to do the backup. So what we want to do is come at it from a business perspective. So there's a consulting piece of it to look at all of our business processes, where the risks are, and to establish a plan. Then, on the second part of it, we're, it's a hardware component. And the hardware component is storage and software, hardware and software, to be able to do the backup and recovery system. So we are, we're transitioning what we have right now to a much better, more resilient infrastructure, so that we can survive not only a natural disaster, but a cybersecurity incident too. So that's, that's the disaster backup recovery system. Darktrace is a network security software that was originally council-approved, but based on some conversations with some other professionals in my, my line of work at other cities and, and in the industry, it came to a point that that's probably not the priority one. So with conversation with Mayor Farrell, we kind of, we switched that to a different software solution, and so we're coming back because security is always about layered approaching, a layered, a layered approach. So you can't have, think of it as an onion, and you just keep layering security solutions. There's not one silver bullet, unfortunately, that will just take care of everything. So that's why this is just one more piece to that puzzle or to that onion. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah. I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask my second question, or wait?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
This is for Brian. The community assistance, you said, I know you don't have a process in place, but does that mean communities would apply for a grant? And do they have to be like a nonprofit, or could a neighborhood, who would be able to apply? Is it okay for a group of people to apply for that funding?
Yeah. And that's the kind of details that we would want to iron out. I would say that in speaking with Sarah, in administering the, this type of additional dispersment, the most efficient way to do that is to, is to take our current process and to merely expand the dispersment amounts, so that those who are already receiving either general fund or block grant dollars, which is, you know, it's never enough to keep it going. So this would just, another approach is to add to that amount that they would get to help them with some of the loss that they've experienced.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dovi.
I think I figured it out, but my question is, the one that's just a big picture priority?
Mike, please.
Big picture priorities, this chart that starts out at 19 million?
Yes.
So am I right in assuming this 14 million is what is on this list of things that have been itemized?
That's correct.
Now, are we committed to those, or those are for discussion?
Yes. So the, so the top four, you'll notice there's a column with some dates on it.
Yes.
That, the council has, has given soft approval for the, even approval for that, and those are the dollar amounts to the right that they've approved. Everything else has, this is our proposal, and so it's for council discussion or approval or modification at this point.
Okay. So my question is, when I think, I thought you said that these are for one-time things that aren't reoccurring. So how, I mean, I'm looking at Public Defender, and how is that not reoccurring? Is that a reoccurring expense after we do this, or, I mean, I just, I see some of these that are one-time that make, but is this all, this is all open for discussion, and we can play around with it? Is that correct?
Yeah. Correct. Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Okay. And then when you go through all the things that have been already allocated in the proposal, then you're, we're saying we have $3.7 million, $26 left to allocate, but it needs to be public health and economic impact.
That's correct. Yeah. And to your earlier question about, you know, a position that currently is not on the payroll, it's, I think it's more of a question of, is this position needed in the first place, which we believe it is?
Probably is.
And if so, can this jumpstart that sooner than later?
And Mayor, if I could, the Public Defender is actually under contract, so this is actually a one-time expense in the idea that it would be expanding the existing contract. So when we went out to rebid, we'd, you know, we'd basically expect the current level of service, but it's not like adding a full-time employee to the city payroll.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. So since we started getting money from the government when COVID started with CARES Act and everything else, how many vehicles have we purchased or do we plan to purchase, you know?
Citywide?
Citywide.
I'm going to look over to Public Works and Finance.
Are you asking, using funding out of this or in general?
Funding that we receive from the government because of COVID.
So out of ARPA, we purchased none. Out of the original CARES Act grant, we did purchase a number of the smaller trucks to get staff split up for parks, police, and public works, and I believe one for community development as well. But I don't have an exact number off the top of my head.
Out of ARPA, we've got 28 police vehicles that we just approved back in October, and those are already, those are now in process, they're being, they've been ordered, they've been obligated.
So my concern is, is that for all the vehicles that we purchased since this started, we need to have enough money to put into the replacement funds and to keep the vehicles operating and running for, what, at least seven years for police cars. Do we have that in the general budget, or is this going to impact the general budget?
In the future.
In the future.
Yeah. I think some of them are new with the expansion of the, of the police officers, and that was considered when we expanded the, the proposal for police officers, I believe, if I'm going to state it.
That's correct. We added 13 officers, and then the 28 vehicles was to also facilitate, I believe, a take-home program, and that would create a replacement obligation on the city's part. Unfortunately, ARPA has a specific prohibition against using ARPA money for reserves, so we're going to have to be creative and be able to identify city expenses that makes the city stronger, so that we can be able to budget in the future better for replacement.
I'm not sure that you answered it the way that I'd like to hear an answer, so I imagine we'll find out when we're working on the budget next fall if we have the funds available to, to, to address my concerns. I would also say that I'm concerned about putting the money into the 373rd Roundabout. To me, it's a state road, and I've been talking with Representative Jamila Taylor recently. She said that we told her we didn't need any additional funding from the state because we had the funding coming. I think it's a state road, and I would like to see the state put the funding into it.
No, actually, what, what actually happened was, we went to Representative Taylor and asked for that funding, and then she asked so many questions that she was actually, in a sort of a passive-aggressive way, opposing our efforts. So we went to go get the money elsewhere, so we wouldn't be totally reliant on our state legislature. So we found that money because we couldn't rely on Representative Jamila Taylor's, because she was literally opposing us trying to get this money to save lives, where multiple people had died. That's what happened. And after we got that money, we were able to then say, never mind. That's what happened.
And the streetlights is, I know that there's a list of people around the city who would like streetlights added to their neighborhoods. Is this to address that?
It is. We were asked to develop a cost to complete all of the ones that have been ranked and evaluated and have passed the council-adopted scoring, and that is 175 different locations. Some of those locations have multiple lights, so it's, it's a low number. So that is funding the installation of all of the open requests that have been evaluated and have met the scoring requirements.
Does that cover every light on the list?
Every light that met the scoring requirements, yes. There's, we have received requests that do not meet the adopted scoring.
Okay.
That never go on the list. So there have been additional requests made over many, many years that do not score high enough to even make the list initially, so it does not include those. It only includes ones that have met the guidance from council historically.
So the list that you're talking about is an approved list?
Correct.
Okay. So then, who's responsible for paying the bill for that streetlight? Is it going to be the city or the neighborhood that it's going into?
For the electric, I'm assuming?
Yes.
It'll be the city. There'll be city-owned and operated lights. So the annual cost for the electric is about $60,000 for all these lights, which we've already talked about with Director Groom, and that's going to have to be part of the budget process in the fall.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Norton.
Okay. So regarding the community allocated funds, will people who've experienced problems because of the rise in crime since COVID started be able to apply for, let's say, broken windows and that kind of thing? Is that, is that what we're looking at here with the, with what's left? And then possibly paying back their PPP loans and things like that?
Yeah. It's a great question, and that's, I don't have the fine details for you at this point because it's federal dollars, and if we're, you know, for example, broken windows, does the building have asbestos? And if so, we're using federal dollars to asbestos, and there's additional guidelines for that. So it, there, we need to work out those details if we're talking specifically about building rehab for, to dedicate these funds because of economic loss or to help community members. We need to, if that's one of the things that the council wants, we need to do additional research to see if that's eligible, and then what would be the process to make it happen, secondly.
Okay. What about, I'm just thinking about the emails and things that I see about all the rise in crime and people having property damage, and this is something that rose exponentially with COVID and during COVID, and I'm just wondering if those people could possibly be helped with this, our local business owners, restaurateurs, you know, people who are having the smash and grabs happening, if there is a way that we could possibly help them out and allocate some of this toward that? Or is that, I mean, can that be blamed on COVID? I mean?
It's, I don't have an answer at this point because we would need to specifically link that up to the guidance from Treasury and make sure that it fits with that, and if it doesn't, if there's some other way that we can help them out where they do meet the criteria.
Okay.
So I hear what you're saying, and I think what, the direction I need is, is that we need to look into that. It sounds like that's something that the council will be interested in, and so we can do that and come back with an answer of how best to help those that have been affected by economic loss due to crime or other COVID-related issues.
All right. Councilmember Dovi.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Dovi.
I guess I have a question on this, public health and economic impacts. And I guess I'll make a statement. First of all, I mean, this seems to me like an opportunity for us to do some really creative things in federal way. So my question is, how do you know what the rules are for public health and economic impacts? It's outside of the box, not what we've been doing in the past, something that could really impact our community. Are we able, as a council, to think of those things and then come to you and see if we want to do something totally weird or different?
It, it doesn't hurt to ask to let us know what you're interested, to see if we can then match it up with the eligibility.
So here's, here's my question. You got gun violence is a key thing that the feds want us to work on, right? I'm thinking. And we have a community center that's underutilized by our citizens. I hear people all the time that say they can't afford to go, kids are looking for places to go after school, we got a premier place in federal way. Could we use the money to give memberships to kids, so they come to the community center, get trained on gun violence, have a place to go, I mean, do something totally different out of the box that nobody's thought about? And be different than everybody else in all the other South King County, because we're doing things for youth, helping the parents that don't have daycare, teaching about gun violence, and we're using our facility to its max.
So on a question?
I mean, I just pose that as a out-of-the-box idea.
As an eligibility issue, are you prepared to answer that, or something that we should have Steve group?
I don't, I don't know if we can, I, what I recommend, Mayor, is that we get these ideas on the table.
Okay.
And then allow staff to do the research to see if we can link it up with the eligibility criteria. So I, yeah, to Councilmember Dovi's question, I mean, let's have all the ideas that you have tonight, and then we'll, there's, I think there's a few on here that I would recommend moving on tonight, but if there's other ideas that you want to hold off on this list and then have us look at other ones that you don't see on here, then we can certainly do that.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Walsh, and then Council President Honda.
Whatever. Whatever.
A couple of things. One is that the way it looks is that we have four years to spend the funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then something that did have COVID-related, what I'm thinking, one of the nonprofits I'm most familiar with is the Senior Center and the Senior Center Food Bank. Even though it lies outside of the city, it's still mostly federalway residents that are, that are utilizing it. And it's been greatly impacted because most of its funding has come from facility rentals, which there hasn't been any, there's been unable to be any. And so would it fall within the guidelines to be able to provide some additional funding for it, since they are way underfunded because of the no facility rental income coming in? Okay. Moving on. All right.
Okay. Council President Coach Martin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions and then a suggestion, which you probably already know, but I'll suggest it anyway. So with the parks, at, what we need is 11 million for turf at celebration parks, so that our children can use that field when it's not being used for tournament play, so that our actual citizens can use that, and also that will alleviate our problem with huge maintenance costs. I think they're huge, but I don't have a number for that. So of that 11 million that's needed, only 2 million would be eligible under this program?
We're proposing 2 million.
2 million? Okay. So we're, Councilmember Sephardosson and Deputy Mayor Honda and I'll be going to DC March 13th through the 15th. If you could prepare a letter that would stipulate what we need for the turf fields, so that we can take it to Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell.
Yes.
And possibly Congressman Adam Smith, who's our congressman, and just say, because when Councilmember Dovi and I met with Congressman Smith, he said possibly 2 million. But if we, if we could, what you really need is a letter that specifies what it is we're looking for. is a letter that specifies what it is we're looking for in a bullet form. Like, we need 9 million for turf fields. And then itemize why. And then our consultant, our lobbyist, federal lobbyist, can go in and then each month, keep reminding him that that's the money we need for our city. And so we need a targeted approach to get the money we need for that.
Yes, we can do that. When's your trip again?
March 13th through the 15th.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So the other thing I see at the bottom of this list is 320,000 for LTA lodging tax, LTAC. So what would that be used for, 320,000? I'm just, I'm fine, I'm just curious what it's used for.
I believe that's just additional to help out what we already have in the lodging tax fund. Just additional...
That they can apply?
Yes.
Okay. So my thinking for the council, because we have a lot of ideas, if we could just, do you want them by email? Do, because we may not have all our ideas tonight, but...
Yes.
What time, what deadline do you need for us to submit our ideas?
Thank you for the question. I mean, we do have...
We have four years.
Four years.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm ready to go right now.
Yes, I totally agree. It'd be better to act sooner than later. So, yeah, the sooner the better. But email would be ideal. I'm not expecting you all to just have every idea possible tonight here live. So if there's things that you have in addition that you want to, then by all means, please send them to me by email.
Well, along with Councilmember Norton, I'm also very interested in making sure that we get some money, whether it's from this pot of money or from our city general fund. A pot of money that our businesses can apply for broken windows. I mean, it's called, you know, the broken window concept. The first thing you want to do is repair that broken window so you don't have more. And there are so many businesses in our city that have plywood on their doors, on their windows. And they're small businesses. They're not the major, large companies. And I just think that we should have a general fund, a fund of some sort that our businesses can apply for that money. They can't go through their insurance. It increases their insurance. So I know that you know that. It's just, we have 3.7 million that's not currently allocated. I'd like to see a portion of that going back into the business community who have been severely impacted by crime and COVID-related issues because people have not been able to go to the businesses. So, and then I, as other councilmembers have stated, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Dovey, talked about things that we need for perhaps the food bank or perhaps we need for the community center. Maybe just, I don't know if you can do a percentage of it? Or just let us know, for each of our ideas, just, you know, allocate a certain amount of percentage or money from that 3.7 million so that we know what we're dealing with and...
Yes, that would be wonderful, yes, thank you.
Okay, but I'd love to see it going out real quick, not four years.
Yes, I totally agree.
Thank you.
Okay, first Deputy Mayor Honda, and then Councilmember Dovey.
Thank you. So quite a while ago, I asked if we could put some of this money into a, I don't know what I called it, but a weekend once a month where the community center could be open for families or anyone who wanted to use it? Because for some, it's just too expensive. And I don't know if anyone ever researched that on the staff, probably not. But we know that especially our young people are having mental health issues. And it might be just a great place for kids to be able to come and swim or play basketball or do whatever it is that they'd like to do for free. And if we could do it once a month for a year, I think it would be a really awesome thing for the residents here in federal way. And also, I was wondering if there is any way that we could use some of this for housing expenses for perhaps seniors who are having issues with their housing?
Yes, we will, we'll take these down and we'll come back to you on the possibility of that.
All right, because I don't want us to forget seniors. You know, we have a, gosh, I'm a senior. But, you know, we have a city full of senior citizens. And with the rising cost of food and everything else, and, you know, listening to the state legislature, it sounds like everything else is gonna be rising with additional fees and taxes. It's a, it's a hard hit for senior citizens. And if we, if we could do something to help, that would be awesome.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovey? Oh, I see your light on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, any other suggestions?
Mayor, if I could, just to, just to help us make progression on this, I talked with the department heads about what items on here. These are, I mean, this is if we had, we're all in agreement of spending the money today. And it's great that we're gonna have additional discussion. But if we could get indication from the council on the following items to get your approval for these funds, it would be helpful as we move forward with these needed expenditures. And then also, as we go into budgeting, knowing what we're gonna have to set aside for either general fund or other sources of revenue. So these are, these are seven items. It's the O-Court software, the disaster backup. And then down in Public Works, two trucks and the salt stacker. And then in Parks, the three HVAC items to help out with the air quality in all three buildings. As we open back up, the air quality will be in increasing concerns. As you see, we got, you know, temporary things to help out now. But by getting at the larger system, that will help out with the overall air quality in all three of the buildings. So those are the seven that we would ask the council and recommend that the council approve for this evening, if you're comfortable. And then we can add those, again, at the top of the list, there's four up there that have been approved by the council. We would then add those to the list and then have the remaining amount to discuss with the ideas that you've submitted tonight. And then we can prioritize those at a future meeting.
Deputy Mayor Honda.
Is there, first of all, a reason that they need to be approved tonight? And since this is the first time council has seen this, I would say at least give us a couple of weeks to go through this. I, we've approved a lot of money so far, in my opinion, a lot of money out of this fund for various different things. And I would like us to take a really deep look at these recommendations and the other things that council members have suggested before we start approving things.
Yes.
So we could have a couple of weeks?
They can wait, just trying to move the discussion along. If you want to take additional time before you decide on that, that's fine. But we would like to, maybe at the next discussion, when we have this, again, just have in mind that we're looking to at least check off some of these. And then we can slowly make progress on this.
I would think that would be okay. But asking us tonight, I think, is not a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dovey, and then Council President Coach Mark.
I have a little different opinion than what was expressed. I mean, capital things like trucks and software and things like that, we're gonna buy them anyway, probably. So I'm not so sure I'd want to keep putting those type of things off. But the question I have has to do with the pool slide. It's 984,000. I can't remember, we put 500,000. Do we have the other money in the budget? Or were we gonna go raise that somewhere else?
Yeah, so that is, that is a, we did set aside 500,000. That was the estimate that we believed it was going to cost at the time we came to the council for that amount.
But it's, but it's 984?
It's, well, it's more than that because, so we went out to bid. The bid was not responsive, so we went out again. The sole responsive bid was more than double that.
So I guess what I was gonna say, my suggestion is, if we were in for a half million dollars for a slide for the community center, which is the flagship of our community, and this is one-time ARPA money to make, and it passes and it's for our community, I don't know why we wouldn't just go for the whole 984 instead of have to say, let's go figure it out in the budget in October and when we have this money to do capital one-time things. I mean, that would, that's just my suggestion when I read these numbers because we have a contingency of 2 million. So, you know, I'm all for moving things forward incrementally. And we have a long discussion about the social things and the gun control and all these programs. But capital things that are with chip issues and buying things that we know we're gonna have to buy, I'm not sure we should say, I gotta think about it for another two weeks. That's just my comment.
All right. Council President Coach Mark.
Thank you. I'm just wondering about procedure, Mayor. Since this is a special meeting, I don't think we can take action at a special meeting. But I think that perhaps, and maybe Councilmember Honda has an idea, at our agenda-setting meeting, we can talk about some of those items and then decide when to put them on for an action item at a regular meeting.
Let's hear it, Brian.
So, that's correct. This is a special meeting. I don't believe, when Brian is saying action, I think he's looking for a consensus, a direction from council on which items to bring back. All of this money has been appropriated in the budget, in the general fund. Each of these items would have to come back to council for individual authorization. The point is, we don't want to bring things back piecemeal and then have them be rejected piecemeal, which has been the frustration that the deputy mayor's expressed and others, that we're handling these piecemeals. So we're trying to present all of them to you and get kind of a consensus that these are the items to bring back.
Well, maybe this is something we can talk at our agenda-setting meeting and try to move forward and then bring it back at another special meeting. But, and get some of them approved at a regular meeting. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Yes, action will have to happen at the regular time.
Regular meeting, yeah. So then we can take that into account as well.
I just, I'd just rather move faster than slower on some of the capital things, personally.
I see Councilmember Norton's light on.
I just had a question about the PAC upgrades. Do you know what the current bookings are for 2022, 2023 for the PAC? Is it solvent? Is it being booked and making money?
It is being booked.